First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. I am so excited to have, you know, the civic engagement and individuals coming out to engage the community government. We have our three, Appomattox County Board of Supervisor candidates for the Appomattox River District. We're going to start out, I've got some numbers pulled so that they can pull who's going to go in what order, and then we can go ahead and get started. Can I get you three to come on up? Okay, we have Jerry Boyce, we have Kenneth Wolfskill, and we have William Hogan. Go ahead, each of you guys can take, pull one out, and it'll tell you the order in which you're gonna go on. Okay? Yes.
I got number two.
Yeah, I put the sticky side on the inside so they don't have to know we opened anything. Okay?
Well, by process of elimination, you remember this door is open first?
You were number three.
Okay.
I was appreciative of what happened when you could see the number one. So I put the sticky side on the inside too.
I'll take your word for it.
Okay. Okay, so we can go ahead and get started. The format tonight is going to be a brief five-minute introduction, followed by five questions, and we will get, go ahead and get started. Oh, there's one, there's one.
Two and three will just talk.
Yeah, yeah, two and three are gonna follow Rebecca.
What happens after we're done? Do we go down?
Yep, yep. Well, can you take it down here?
That's out of place.
Everyone needs to use the mic.
Yeah, we are going to be recording, so it is important that you do use the microphone, so that it does pick up well on the recording.
Yeah, let's see. Is it working or do I need a poster or what?
You're good, it's on.
All right, well, before we get started, so I'm gonna be the timekeeper.
I do.
That's fine, so the only thing that I'm going to be doing by way of moderating is keeping time. I would pause the time that's available to each candidate if we have an interruption like a train going past. I would also, well, at this time also, I would ask that everybody who is in attendance, silence your electronic devices. So if there was an interruption such as an electronic device, that also would result in a pause of time. But other than that, it's just going to be five minutes straight through for each candidate on each question. And with that said, we open this evening's forum with the introduction from Ken Wolfskill.
Thank you, Mayor Sarah Hamblin Blackwell, for putting this together.
Use the microphone?
I thought I was.
I think it'd work better if we moved it right up to the front.
Just for the record, I had started the time and now I'm resetting it so that, so that...
I do apologize, I do have to look at my notes. Robin and I moved here from PA in 2006. We were looking over a wide area, we chose Appomattox. We quickly fell in love with the county and the people. There's something special here. We're married forty-seven years, have an incredible daughter, a really cool son-in-law, and terrific grandchildren. We're active in our church, the Reform Bible Church in Appomattox. I praise the Lord for sending me to Pastor Paul Michael Raymond. I'm an author, written several, written for several equine magazines, and have published nine books so far. In recent years, I've concentrated on my children's books, Adult Named Saturday. Over the years, I've worked with at-risk youths. I've started programs for them using horses. It's amazing how horses can help young ones relax and open up and get involved. I'm keenly aware of what abuse and molestation can do to young ones. I personally know the triggers last a lifetime. As a Tulsa Way boy, I grew up on a very old-fashioned dairy farm, learned much about husbandry, hard work, and loving nature. And they, being Pennsylvania Dutch. I learned a lot about penny pinching. At that time, I didn't think I liked it that much. Robin and I had our own small real estate and building company for many years. We were involved in land development and commercial real estate. Owning your own business for a lot of years gives you a valuable mindset of money management, personnel hiring, and seeking out different strategies to do things. We've been involved with the Appomattox Republican Committee many years, and have been involved in some local campaigns, gotten to know some really great people. Why am I running? Well, I suppose like all of us running, I think I'm the best for the job. But I really began, something really began to nudge me a long time ago. When we first moved here and I noticed the disrepair of the county-owned buildings, it didn't sit well with me. Then learning of the county debt, I could not believe it should be this way. I do not believe that's correct stewardship. Then our public library with pornographic books in it, and it seems we could do better on encouraging businesses to locate here for young ones, so the young ones don't need to leave for jobs. Praise Mr. Boone for opening his trade school. I'm not one to complain about things, that's just not any help. It's our duty to step up and solve problems. I love this county, and I will work hard to solve problems. This is a great county, and together we can make it even better. Representative Bob Good and candidate Tom Garrett have both endorsed me. Thank you for being here this evening. Do you have any questions then, or do we just hang them from our notes?
No, we're gonna go in order, so we've got introductions for each of the candidates, so that...
Oh, we're back, we're back and forthy? Yes, we're not going through order.
No, we were just giving the introduction and then registration. I'm sorry.
Well, I apologize.
Move to the mic.
Move to the mic.
Yeah, louder. The mic is actually not...
So, all right, so I've reset your five minutes, so the first question is, what is your vision for the future of Appomattox County?
A prosperous and vibrant county. A county where the town's governance and county governance can work together for the betterment of all. A county where our youth don't need to travel too far, off-counties-for-jobs. A county where the Board of Supervisors realize being comfortable with high debt is not the best way. A county where the Board of Supervisors seeks to work with talented commercial real estate agents to bring businesses into our county. There I am. That's what I did when I served on the Downtown Revitalization Board in Pennsylvania. I put a team of volunteers together to interact with talented commercial real estate agents. At the time, we owned our own real estate business, but I sought talents greater than my own. A county whose Board of Supervisors realizes it is their job to create an inviting environment for businesses to locate here. That's the job, not buying industrial parks. A county whose Board of Supervisors sees the awesome responsibility of stewardship applies to everything they are charged with overseeing, and not allowing our public buildings to deteriorate into the disrepair of the early day. I find that sad. A county that maintains and builds on its charm, the charm that attracted Robin and me to relocate here. I'm lying on his side, so I may knock that over when I turn my paper.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Wolfskill. Next question, what sets you apart from the other candidates running in the Appomattox River Districts?
I'm crazy. Last night while door knocking, a man, I have knocked on over five hundred doors in the last six weeks. I've gotten to know, or at least talked to, an incredible amount of wonderful people, and I know a lot more of the county concerns than I did two months ago. But anyway, last night while knocking, door knocking, a man opened his door, and after I deuced myself, he said quite loudly, "I've heard about you, you're crazy. People are saying you're crazy. You have no right to think you can be on the Board of Supervisors. Why don't you just go home?" He went on telling me a few reasons why I'm crazy, like the county will never get me better. When he finished, I looked at him and said, "Well, when you've worked through all that, can I count on your vote?" But I really am crazy. I'm crazy enough to think that our county can have a balanced budget. I'm crazy enough to believe our county can do the right things to encourage job growth. I'm crazy enough to believe our county can truly elect stewardship that keeps our children safe, maintains our public buildings, and offers jobs for young ones, right here, so they don't need to leave. I'm crazy enough to believe our county can fully support the fire companies, emergency service, sheriff's departments in a manner they should be. I'm crazy enough to believe our county can operate without a staggering future-threatening debt, to which it seems our current Board of Supervisors have become too comfortable and accustomed to. I'm crazy enough to believe Appomattox County does not have, does not need to have the highest property taxes of all the surrounding counties. And I'm crazy enough to believe our public library can exist without pornography.
Right. Third question, what do you see as Appomattox County's three greatest challenges, and what can be done to alleviate them?
Stewardship, stewardship, and stewardship. When someone accepts a role of responsibility, with it comes the stewardship of everything in their purview. In the case of our county supervisors, this includes, among other things, finances, county-owned properties, the safety and well-being of citizens. Stewardship of finances, spending tomorrow's money today is not the best stewardship. There's no problem, a good person leaves an inheritance for their children's children. The opposite of that is a fool's plan of children's and children's inheritance. That's what our county's debt does. Note, ABC News had a story a few weeks ago regarding the interest on student loans restarted. They interviewed a young man, young woman, I'm sorry, they interviewed a young woman who frantically explained, "When I have to start paying all this interest, it'll interfere with what I'm able to do today." Sort of makes a point. We need to analyze and revamp how we spend money. We need to investigate where all our money goes. We owe this to the people of our county. There is a difference between need and want. Stewardship of our public buildings, because of the poor stewardship over the past years of our buildings, it's now gonna cost millions to repair them, more debt. My years as a builder taught me maintenance is a lot cheaper than repair. Not good stewards. We need to implement a maintenance program that addresses low routine maintenance so as to prevent costly repairs. Stewardship of the well-being of the county citizens. In my door-knocking campaign, I've visited hundreds of homes. One common concern has been, why are there no jobs for the young people? In the years that Robin and I have lived here, we've seen little change in that. Why must our youth travel to other counties for good jobs? We need a commitment to change that, and that can be done without spending money. That can be done by, like I said earlier, like I did in, pop home in the revitalization committee, and we put together a team of volunteers to work with well-known commercial interstate and realtors that could solicit businesses to move in. It's an outreach thing. The stewardship of our county's monies, buildings, and citizens needs a new approach. What's being practiced now is obviously not been working as well as it could. Let's make it better.
Two minutes, fifty seconds. Oh, that concludes the answer, okay. All right, fourth question. Please describe your economic and budgetary philosophy, and how you would propose to incorporate that philosophy into the county's financial management.
Why am I so focused on debt? Because it robs from the future. Remember, I grew up with those Pennsylvania Dutch people, and there's actually a joke about the Pennsylvania Dutch people. Pennsylvania Dutchmen is the only men that can squeeze a dollar, look at a hundred and eleven pennies out. Spoiled me an insult, it's actually a compliment. It robs from the future. County governance is as much about the future as it is today. Is it right to spend tomorrow's money today? First, we have to crawl out of the hole of debt the county has been in for many years. Currently, our debt is twenty-one million dollars. A little more. I got that directly from our county administrator. I've looked at the year-end audits all the way back to 2008. It seems the county has been in debt right around that twenty million mark since at least ten. Sometimes a little lower, sometimes a lot higher. They pay a little off and borrow again. But let's just use twenty million. Our current debt service is about three million a year, nearly a million a year in interest. If we use the three million for round numbers for the past fifteen years, that's forty-five million in debt and interest payments since 2008, about fifteen million in accumulated interest. Now is a good time to point out that our county has a savings account, because I'm gonna talk about savings accounts. In our family, when we need to purchase things, we use our savings account. Just recently, we bought a refrigerator. We took fifteen hundred dollars from the savings and bought it, and we immediately set up a repayment plan with automatic monthly withdrawal from checking to pay that loan back to ourselves, and we charge ourselves five percent interest. Same as using a credit card, we get the money in interest. We do this all the time, and over the years, our savings account continues to grow. We've become more fiscally sound. In recent years, we've made home repairs, I bought a horse trailer, all with the same approach. It works. Back to the county. Today, we are looking at repairs to all the county properties, millions, I've seen them proposed, beginning with the old courthouse with an estimate coming in at three to four million. First of all, this is an example of poor stewardship to allow this historical treasure to fall into such disrepair. Back to the county savings account, state law mandates that municipalities have a reserve, I believe it's six months, and our county has done a beautiful job of that. I propose for rehabilitation of the old courthouse, we use our own money to fund it, borrow from ourselves, set up an automatic repayment plan, just as if we borrowed from any other lending institution, including paying ourselves the same interest. But the county gets to bank that interest, makes the county stronger. I checked with our county administrator, and we may do this. This is passing on an inheritance to our children's children. I believe in a budgetary philosophy that strongly weighs the difference between nice and need. There are many things that are nice to do, we need to focus on the need to do first. The core function of the county government is safety, protection, education, stewardship come first, before anything else can be considered. My wife and I ran our own real estate and building company for many years. Owning one's own business gives a person a different view of budgeting and economic philosophies. Choices have to be made, sometimes difficult choices.
Thank you. Just one reminder, everybody in the audience could please make sure that their electronic devices are on silent. Mr. Wolfskill, last question, the town of Pamplin has worked hard in the last few years for revitalization. If elected, how would you advocate on the county level for this continued revitalization and economic development?
As I said earlier, the relationship between the towns of Appomattox and Pamplin and the county are vital to the overall success of them all. All, right here. Each should support all, just like a family. I see it as my duty to foster great relationships, it's part of a stewardship. You might think I like that word, I do. I think the mayor of Pamplin has shown extraordinary devotion and effort to rebuilding Pamplin. I look forward to working with her and learning from her. As to advocating, I would hope I'll do everything I can to advocate for all of Appomattox County. After touring the sewer and water facilities of Pamplin, I understand Pamplin is in a really great position for growth. As a developer, I have experience in that area, and I'll make myself available for any meetings, negotiations, conversations, to that end with any prospects who want to come into Pamplin. Many times when a developer looks to build houses, there are sewer and water capacity issues, and more houses do not always mean more net tax revenues. Rather, it often costs the community money. Robin and I personally know that, we were involved in some sticky situations. Pamplin is not a great, Pamplin is in a great position on that front. They have more sewer capacity than they're using by a lot. Pamplin has great internet, a terrific marketing tool, find a way to promote it. I don't even have reliable internet in my house, and in door-knocking the county, I've found many don't. Not good. We need to put our heads together and find a way to invite and interest retail and grocery stores to town. That seems to be a weak area for Pamplin. But I love brainstorming. We need to come up with a plan that focuses on outreach to such entities. They're out there, but they get approached all the time. We need to create an inviting package, so let's put our heads together and work on it. Thank you.
Mr. Boyce will start with your five-minute introduction. Just pay attention to the time, the time will be on the monitor here.
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to thank you guys for showing up on St. Sarah and the clerk for all the work that they've done to make this possible, and so I hope that today you'll get some questions answered, get a little bit more information about what a candidate stands, so that you can make an informed decision in the near future. Just want to introduce myself, my name is Jerry Boyce, my wife is Stephanie. She should be here later on this evening. We've been married for twenty-one years. We have four children, our oldest is our daughter, she's twenty. We have an eighteen-year-old, a sixteen-year-old, and my fourteen-year-old son Josiah is here tonight with me. My first address actually was a Pamplin address, so I'm born and raised in Appomattox. I lived here for most of my adult life, and when I was eighteen, I moved away to go to Bible college, and then I was working in various ministries. The longest, I was in South Carolina for six and a half years, and then ten years ago, I moved back here to work in the home church that I grew up in. Some of the stuff I've done in the community since living here, obviously, has been a minister, so I've ministered in the community. I always like to help deal with people when they're going through issues and trying to problem-solve. I've been a board member for the Appomattox County Advocative Humanity Chapter for the past several years. My official title is a building chairman. I served as a reserve deputy during COVID during 2020, and is a program that I believe was spearheaded really by Robbie Richardson under the leadership of Donald Simpson, Donnie Simpson, and so also, I've been the chaplain of the Appomattox Volunteer Fire Department for the past couple of months. My son Jeremiah, my oldest boy, he serves as a firefighter, and our family, ourself personally, has benefited from the services that the fire department has offered. A handful of years ago, my middle son broke his femur really bad on a church property and had to get flatted out to UVA, and so we're extremely thankful for our first responders. Some of my hobbies and interests, just to get the numbers a little better, I love the outdoors, I like to hunt, like to fish, I like to just spend time outside. I'm also pursuing an archaeology degree, and so for the past two dig seasons, I've been in Israel, digging at the ancient city of Shaloh, and if you know your Bible history, Typernakel was there for over three hundred years in the Old Testament Covenant, and so I'm pursuing a master's degree in archaeology and biblical history, and that's kind of where most of my attention has been focused here of late. I'll be presenting an academic paper in November in Texas at the Near East Archaeological Society, so if you're interested in archaeology, maybe we can talk about that at some point. Why am I running? Throughout the years, I've been approached about the possibility of running for the Board of Supervisors, and it just wasn't, I didn't feel like it was the right time. We were living, lived in a temporary location when I first moved back, and then we were living across the road from the church, and then we decided to sell our property in South Carolina and then built a house. And once we built a house and got settled down, I figured, well, this would be the time. If I'm still interested in running, now would be the time to do so. And so I've always been interested from a distance, I have a lot of different things. And so politics is kind of one of them, even though I typically don't like many politicians, and I don't like the politics that's involved with being a politician and running as a politician. But I believe that there are things that are coming up on the horizon that's gonna require somebody with a strong moral compass and common sense to help guide the county through changes, through various ideologies that probably at some point are going to affect small-town Appomattox. And I can't vouch for how others would govern, I can only vouch for myself. I was joking with one person, and you know, some poor sap has to be it, and also be the poor sap that I know, and not somebody that I don't know. So my hope is that if I am elected, that I can fairly represent the county and Appomattox River District. So that is my introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. First question, what is your vision for the future of Appomattox County?
My vision for the future of Appomattox County is really simple. It involves helping Appomattox maintain and stay a place that is safe to raise a family and pursue dreams. Now, this includes a lot of different things. It includes making sure that our first responders are taken care of, and that they're back and that they're respected, that they have the gear and the training and the support that they need. Also, I believe that objective moral values and duties should be respected and promoted. This means we can't make up our own truth, we can't live life like truth is not objective. And so my vision for Appomattox is that those moral values and duties that helped found our country and what keeps us on the right path are maintained. Also, keeping taxes low and not spending money in areas where it's not needed. Part of my vision also includes bringing and keeping common sense in the county. Now, I freely admit that I do not know as much as my opponents know. They're further in life than I am. Mr. Hogan has experience in governing, and Mr. Ken has experience in life, but I'm teachable, and I can learn, I'm a fast learner, and I would hope that if elected, that I can lean on these men and others that have served in this community and in this county and on the board, so that I too can govern well and help to make the vision that I have for the future of Appomattox become a reality.
Thank you. Second question, what sets you apart from the other candidates running in the Appomattox River Districts?
I would say one thing that sets me apart is I am not your typical candidate. Now, I don't know if I could paint what a typical candidate looks like, but as I mentioned before, I really don't like politics, and I have a healthy dose of skepticism for politicians. But I also serve in ministry, and so I try to stay focused on that calling. And part of that means that the time that I would like to be out, getting to meet people and getting to know and greet and share my vision, sometimes that has to take a backseat to what primarily brought me to Appomattox in the first place. So it's a delicate balance, where I have to sort of triage my priorities, and this can affect how I campaign. However, after speaking to some board members, it's not going to really affect how I govern as far as the time of restraints that are required to serve on the board. So while I would like to be out beating bushes and knocking on doors and planting lots of signs and getting to know people, unfortunately, I just can't do that. So you probably could say I'm running right now a low-key campaign, which is probably not what a typical candidate would do. I've also not sought outside endorsements, because I believe that those that live and work in Appomattox are the best people to get to endorse you for this position. So while others may have sought endorsements from those that live outside of the county, I have not sought to do that. As I mentioned before, I'm hilarious politicians, and so I don't know if this is typical for folks that are running, but we've also lived the glasshouse life, my family and I, for the past ten years here in the community. Being in the ministry, you're... Being in ministry, you don't get the privacy that you sometimes would like to get as a citizen. And that's also true for folks who are in political offices. Their lives are scrutinized, their families, decisions that they make. And so I don't know if this sets me drastically apart from Mr. Hogan, but I do know what it's like to live in a glasshouse. What also sets me apart is I've lived here most of my life and I have raised a family here. And so we have, as I mentioned before, a large age bracket from 20 years old down to 14. And so I know what it's like, the challenges that a parent faces when it comes to what their children may be exposed to in various areas of the county and also just doing life. So I have a vested interest in the future of Appomattox County. Because I know my kids that I'm still raising are living there. Future grandkids, Lord willing, will be living here. I've served the community for over a decade in various positions. I've already pointed some of this out when I talked about some of the community service that I have done. So I think that helps set me apart. Perhaps my belief in the role of government, that government's primary responsibility is to protect citizens and to protect their rights. It's not going to be a sugar daddy or provide everything that people want and wish for. And I probably, not far off the mark in saying, I believe that my opponents probably feel similar as I do in that area. But I also have a biblical worldview. And that's something that I can't separate from the things that I do in life. This does not mean that as a politician, that I'm going to be preaching at board meetings or using my personal beliefs in some matters for policymaking. But what it does mean is I look at things through objective biblical worldview. Things that do not change with time, they don't change with the population, they don't change with popular opinion. And so perhaps this would set me apart from the other candidates.
Thank you. Third question, what do you see as Appomattox County's three greatest challenges and what can be done to alleviate them?
I think this probably harkens back to my vision and the vision that I have for the future of Appomattox. One of those challenges or threats, if you will, is having a safe community. And this means protection, but probably not protection from what people normally think of. It means protection from higher powers, decisions that are coming out of Richmond, decisions that are coming out of DC, loss of rights and the policies that make money worth less and less. I see that as a threat to our county. If you're like me, you notice when you go to the grocery store, this costs them more and more just to survive. And so I think that is something that is affecting most everybody that has to pull out their wallet and make a purchase. And part of that is because of foolish policies and decisions that come from higher powers. I also think that there's physical threats that would face us in the future. And so disasters of various natures where first responders need to be well-equipped and trained to respond to, such as the tornado that we experienced a handful of years ago. And also this threat from people in general. So I want Appomattox to be safe. I want it to be a place where people can pursue dreams and raise a family without fear of what can happen to them. So I think that a safe community is one of those things. Another one of those things is the breakdown of objective truth and all that that involves, which means we can't live life making up our own truth. What's true today may not be true tomorrow. Policies like that and people capitulating to those ideas and ideals is part of what has gotten us in this mess to begin with. And so I think that when the community or when leaders or people that serve within the government of a community forget that there is objective truth, there is truly right and wrong. You can't change what fundamentally science says something is just because you don't like it or because you wake up one day and you feel that that's not so. These are policies and things that threaten our community. And I think that people that govern need to recognize that to govern in a way where they ignore objective truth is detrimental to society. And I think another, the last is forgetting what America was founded on to begin with and the values that helped shape America. Ultimately, I believe that it would boil down to a spiritual problem. But again, that's the preacher in me, that's not necessarily the politician. But I think most of us can recognize that there is right and wrong. There is evil in society. And I think that when we come together as a community and we can agree that some things will always be right and other things will always be wrong, then we're going to be ahead of the ball when it comes to the threats and the concerns that face our county.
Thank you. Fourth question, please describe your economic and budgetary philosophy and how would you propose to incorporate that philosophy into the county's financial management?
As I mentioned earlier, I do have a biblical worldview. And part of that is admitting that ultimately, I'm a steward of everything that I have, including finances. And what this means is, is I can't always look at what I have and claim it is mine without some sort of sense that has been given to me from somebody else to steward. And so with that in mind, I believe that debt is generally a bad idea. And so trying to mitigate it by knowing what one needs and budgets appropriately, that's part of my economic and budgetary philosophy. Also, when money is tight, don't buy what you don't need. Now, these are common sense things. But sometimes people that may serve in government that are given a blank check, so to speak, they forget these things. Also, the rainy day will eventually come. And most of us have been around long enough to know that that's happened and it's probably going to happen again, not only in our personal lives, but also extrapolated out to county budgets. So when using other people's money, I think that people have to remember the golden rule. Treat others the way you want to be treated, treat other people's money the way you want your money to be treated. And when it comes to spending, does this expenditure help the government fulfill its primary role as the protector of its citizens? Now, this involves everything from infrastructure to maybe better gear for first responders. And will this expenditure help the citizens retain faith in its representatives? And if a citizen has no faith that their representatives are being wise with their money, then that causes problems. So that would be my economic and budgetary philosophy and how I would incorporate it into the county's financial management.
Thank you. Fifth question, the town of Pamplun has worked hard in the last few years for revitalization. If elected, how would you advocate on the county level for this continued revitalization and economic redevelopment?
Again, I think this harkens back to the vision for Appomattox, where it's a safe place to raise a family and pursue dreams. And I want all parts of the county to be a safe place to raise a child, pursue dreams. And this would include bringing dead or dying communities back to life, making it a place where people seek to live and they know that there are people that care about infrastructure and they care about keeping history in front of people and also the resources that that community has brought to the county in the past. And this is all, it's bringing to bear all of the preceding philosophies that I mentioned earlier. And so if elected, I'm going to remember that there's more than one town in the county. The town of Appomattox often overshadows the town of Pamplun. But the folks that live in Pamplun are no different than the folks that live in the town of Appomattox or no different than the folks that live in the Appomattox River District or any other district. They're people. They have issues, they have problems, they have dreams and desires. They want safety, they want protection, and they want government to serve them and not them to serve the government. And so part of my advocacy for the continued revitalization would be to remember that there are people that live in Pamplun and they have needs. And infrastructure has needs and buildings have needs. And these things need to be taken care of so that Pamplun becomes what it used to be, a place where people liked to live and bring their children and raise families. I'm not saying that you're going to rebuild the pipe factory, but putting Pamplun back together and helping folks see what Pamplun can bring to the table to the county of Appomattox.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. And we will now, in a moment, appear for Mr. Hogan. Mr. Hogan, just a note, there will be, you'll see your time there. So if you need to track that, it's right there in this room. And we will begin the vote with your five-minute introduction.
All right, well, thank you. First, I want to thank the town of Pamplun. I want to thank the mayor. I want to thank E. W. Mitchell for moderating and just thank the citizens who showed up tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I think it's important that we understand when we go to vote, who we're voting for and what they stand for. So I think this was a great opportunity. Thank you for that. My name is Bill Hogan. I live here in the Pamplun, Ritter Pamplun community, a little bit outside of Pamplun, closer to Hickburg. I've been a resident of Appomattox County all my life. And I went away to school, to Virginia Tech. And so I know the county, I know the people. So yeah, I went to Virginia Tech. I married to my wife Danielle, who's here tonight, and my daughter Ashka. Thank you for coming. And we've got another daughter that's in college at JMU. So it's a great place to raise a family and a great place to live. And I've been a member of the Pamplun Volunteer Fire Department for 28 years. Doesn't seem like it's been that long, but it has. I've been in law enforcement for 25 years, will be 26 by the end of this year. So public safety is kind of in my blood. I've done it all my adult life. So those things, that's who I am. I'm just, I'm just an old country boy, nothing special about me. But I know my neighbors, my neighbors know me. And that's kind of what just got me into the position I'm in back in 2015. A board member at that time retired and nobody vowed to run for election, nobody. So people kind of started talking like, well, what are we going to do? I was in the danger of, you know, you want to do it, you want to do it? Well, I don't know. I'll think about it. Long story short, I was a running candidate back in 2015 just because people kept asking me to do it. I wasn't real sure I wanted to do it, but I did it and I'm glad of it. This has been a unique opportunity for me to give back to my community, to serve not just the Pamplun area, but the entire county. And I've learned a lot from it. So I ran again in 2019, I guess it was. And struggled whether or not to run this time, to be quite frank. But ultimately, after much prayer and thought and discussions with my wife, I felt like I still had a little bit more gas in the tank. And there's some things that I'd still like to see accomplished. And so that's why I'm here with you guys this evening and thank y'all for being here.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan, first question, what is your vision for the future of Appomattox County?
Okay, sure. So I think first, before we start looking ahead, we need to look what we got. And we recognize that this is a great place to live and raise a family and work. We have excellent schools, we have excellent sheriff's office, we have low crime rate. We have a low tax rate. I think that's important. You know, we have the lowest personal property tax rate of any of our adjoining localities. We've got the lowest. We have a real estate tax rate that is right on par with all of our neighbors who are comparable in size and economy. We are more than Campbell County, but we can't compare ourselves to Campbell or Vex. That's apples and oranges. Campbell is three times bigger than New York. So if it comes to training.
So yes, I'll actually take the vote. This is definitely a long train.
Yeah, it's long.
And there we go. Right, so just for the benefit of the record, we paused at 3 minutes and 36 seconds. So now we'll go ahead and resume.
Okay, so we were just talking about our vision and I was just giving us a little groundwork for where we're at. And we were talking about taxes and yeah, so we're at 63 cents per 100 on real estate. Charlotte Campbell is at 61 and Nelson is at 65. So we're right there in the middle. So as far as our tax rates are concerned, we're in good shape as a locality. We haven't raised taxes as a board in eight years. In fact, we have lowered taxes. We've lowered the personal property tax by two cents. And I'm sorry, we lowered the real estate tax by two cents. And we lowered the personal property tax by 35 cents, which is over 10%. So we have a history of not having to raise taxes, my term on the board, and in fact, we've lowered them. But looking forward, my vision would be to continue that kind of management. We're going to look for growth opportunities to expand our tax base so we don't have to raise taxes on people that aren't living. The more people that you, or businesses that you have that contribute to the tax base and as you spread those taxes out amongst more people and more businesses, then you don't have to charge each one as much. And that's been one of my philosophies. And that's my vision for the future of Appomattox, is the way we need to keep going. Even though we haven't raised taxes, our tax collections are actually up 30%. Our revenues are up 52%. So think about that, that our revenues have doubled, I'm sorry, not doubled, but been up, we're up 50% since 2015. A lot of that is rent, a lot of that is state funding, other things, other funding resources that we're able to capitalize on and bring into our county that we don't have to tax our citizens on to get that money. We need to, when you have that growth, we need to properly manage it so that it don't negatively impact our historic and rural heritage. We need to be careful where we grow, how we grow. So that's another part of my vision, just be careful when you're looking to the future. Where do you, you know, you have to, you can't think right now, you have to think five years from now, 10 years from now. How is this going to impact folks then? So another thing that my vision would include is supporting innovative ideas and public-private partnerships that we've used in the past. Probably the biggest, best example right now is the Carver Price Legacy Center and the GoCheck Center that's going there. That's going to be, that has the potential to be a real game changer for our community, our region and developing people with the skills needed to do the jobs that our manufacturers and employers need them to do, help keep our kids here. And so, you know, we're already working with Virginia Metal Lab and some other local businesses. So they're doing great work there. My vision would include things like that, to continue doing that. And I'm excited about our future.
Just one moment as I reset the time to five minutes. Right, your second question, Mr. Hogan, what sets you apart from the other candidates running in the mathematics borough district?
Well, the one thing that doesn't set me apart, the one thing that I can take for comforting is, is that I was talking to Mr. Boyce and Mr. Willskill in the back. And the one thing I can take for comforting is that knowing that no matter who wins this race, we're going to have a Christian representative's district. I think that's important. But what sets me apart from the other candidates, I think, I think it's my experience. It's my experience on the board, having been on the board for eight years now. It takes time to really understand what a lot of the nuances are about what our board can actually do and what we can't do, what a board, individual board member, what we have control over and what we don't. So that, it takes time to understand all that. So I've been through that growing phase and that learning phase. I don't have to do that over. I think my experience with helping to craft the county budgets has given me an inside look into what our needs are and where our tax dollars need to be spent. What the choices are when we set budget priorities. Sometimes there's not, there's not enough money to go rank. So we have to make choices. Okay, which one is, which one can, needs to be funded this year, and which one can wait till next year? We have to understand that when you make those choices and put things, prioritize things, what is the impact? If I don't do this now, how is it going to affect this later? So that, that's been an education. And that's something that I've already got under my belt. I've had to learn a lot about state and federal mandates and how they often dictate to us what we have to do. They don't give us the tools or the resources to do it. So we have to figure out that on our own. And, you know, there are important things as a board member that you have to understand. What's a, what's a flung? That's a future land use map. I have no idea going forward. I got on the board of supervisors, okay? But what, you know, what's the comp load? Why is that important? What do they do? You know, what, what's the difference between living in, or wanting to develop in a R1 versus R2 zone? I mean, all those things are important. And I think it's, you know, when, when is the public hearing? When do you have that public hearing, and when do you not? When can you act on something, and when do you have to wait? You know, all these things can't be learned overnight, and they're critical to how we operate. And I think my experience on the board has given me special insights into that when a citizen has a particular issue, you need to know who they need to talk to. Is it the building inspector? Is it VOD? Is it your utility provider? I mean, who can actually fix this citizen's problem? And I have learned through my experience on the board, who those people are, who they need to talk to, how to get in touch with them, and also known by first name. So I think that's important. Build relationships with those contacts, and know who's responsible for what, and have a reach out to those people. And I alluded to earlier, and I've lived here all my life, my experience just being a, growing up here, going to school here, raising a family here, it gives me some insight into why certain things are the way they are. What's the history behind this? Why do we do it this way? It might not be the best way to do it. Maybe we need to look at that, maybe we need to change that. We need to understand why is it the way it is now, and what changing it to be better. You know, my volunteer service in my community, my professional experience helps me to understand the issues that face our public safety providers. Again, I've been doing this my entire board life. And it is the second highest percentage of our budget is public safety. So knowing those things, knowing what they need, knowing what their issues are, that's important. And I think that personal experience helps with that, too.
Mr. Hogan, third question, what do you see as mathematics county's three greatest challenges, and what can be done to alleviate them?
So the first one, I think, continues to be economic development. As I mentioned earlier, we still, you know, we need to be able to grow and expand our tax base so we don't burden our citizens. You know, there's a lot of things that we can do, but there's a big thing that we can't change, and that's our geography. We cannot change where we are. We don't have an interstate. We don't have an international airhead nearby. We have learned that our soils are not compatible to large-scale development. There's too much rock in the ground in some places. And, you know, so there's some things that we just simply can't change. We were a finalist in an economic development project last year, two years ago. We actually got down to the last two in a large auto parts distribution facility. They were looking at our industrial part. And they loved us. They loved everything about us. They loved our workforce. They loved our administration. They loved how we do business around here. The bottom line for them was transportation costs were too much. They were, we were too far from the port of Virginia. And with their business model, shipping stuff in and out, it didn't make economic sense for them to come. So that, we can't change. So what can we do? We need to make sure that number one, we keep the businesses we already have. We need to make sure we provide every incentive for businesses to stay here, to expand here. We have worked with Virginia Metal Lab before to keep them in mathematics county. And by the way, isn't it great to have them in Thomasville building there? You see some activity up there. But they, you know, they were growing and they were expanding. They needed a place to go, but they were looking for something, they were looking someplace else. And we worked with that business to keep them here. We need to make it easier for businesses to stay here and expand here, cut the red tape. We helped the DRT when they were looking to expand. We helped them to find a way to stay in mathematics, keep that tax base here. We need to recognize the importance of our small businesses. Remember that a lot of times, small businesses with fewer employees actually pay higher salaries than large businesses with a lot of employees. So that's important. We need to rely, maybe not so much on figuring out the next big business that's going to employ 900 people. I heard I had nine businesses that employ 100 people. And I want that to be diversified across different economic spectrums. You know, manufacturing, retail, service economy, agriculture. So when one economic segment hits a snag, we don't all lose our pants, okay? So that's, you know, that's what happened when we learned that textiles and furniture, you know, when all your eggs are in one basket, it's not necessarily a good thing. We need to look at class tracking, the permitting process, what people want to come here. You know, how many building permits do they need? How many land disturbance permits do they need? Do they need a rezoning permit? How do we make their process easier for them? Cut some of that red tape. I've got a minute, 10 seconds, let's write. So that's some number one, right? I guess, number two, fixed increases in our budget. Every year, our budget goes up automatically, whether we spend an extra penny or not. Things like, you know, VRS contributions, things like our health insurance for our employees, automatic increases of software licenses, the software that runs our CAD and RMS for our dispatch center and our sheriff's office, and other public safety agencies. Now, the financial software for our treasurer and commissioner, those things have built in increases every year. So last year, we were planning the budget, the very first meeting we had, before we put this on the paper, before we voted, or even talked about spending a dime, our budget had already gone up half a million dollars. So that's, that's a challenge that we have to manage. 10 seconds, the last challenge, real quick. I don't know if I can do this in 10 seconds. And this may be a little bit odd, but volunteerism, and I don't have time to talk about that, but I'll be happy to talk to anybody afterwards about it.
Mr. Hogan, fourth question, please describe your economic and budgetary philosophy and how you would propose to incorporate that philosophy into the county's financial management?
Sure. I am a, have a conservative economic philosophy. Some people might say I'm too conservative. If you ask my wife, she might say I'm a little tightwad. But, you know, I, I believe in fit, sound, conservative fiscal policy. We, as a county, are required by law to have a balanced budget. We're not the federal government. We can't just make our own money. And we can't just borrow ourselves into oblivion to meet the yearly budget. I mean, that's wrong, and that's not the way, that's not the conservative way to pay for things. So we should never get ourselves in a position where we have to borrow money to balance the budget. We should not overextend ourselves by having to balance the budget by pulling from our savings account. If you have to pay your normal operating expenses from your savings account, then nothing's going back into your savings account. Eventually, it's going to dry. So we have done that, and I would not advocate that we do. But that is part of my economic philosophy, my budget philosophy, as far as those things go. So, again, taxes, we haven't raised taxes in eight years, and we don't plan to. So let me touch base on debt, because I know it's been a topic of conversation. And I know the devil's in the details, right? So I don't, I'm hearing all kinds of things, and I want to assure you the sky is not falling, okay? Yes, the county has debt, but what locality doesn't? Any business that operates, has operated debt? You ask a farmer, do they have debt? Absolutely, they have debt. Do you have debt when you go to buy a car? I don't know many, I don't know about you, but I don't know many people that can go out here and pay $50,000 cash and buy a new car, or pay $300,000 cash and buy a new house. When we, we're just like a family. When we come across these large budget, large purchases, we have to finance them, just like everybody else. So, you know, the four-letter word, you know, debt. Yes, we have debt, but we have managed our debt well. The financial experts tell us that we're in a good place financially in this county, that our debt is not a problem. We, Moody's just this May did a reissue on our credit rating. We're at a double A's three. That's our good credit rating. We're in the prime category for investors who want our bonds, because they know they're a good investment. So Davenport, a well-known financial firm out of Richmond, they analyze our county debt, our county finances in general. And they told us that we have a very strong payout ratio. You know, we're on par, we're on track to pay 97.9 percent of our outstanding debt in 10 years. So that is a good situation to be in. The situation is not dire. I mean, I saw it. We are in a really good spot. Is $22 million a lot of money? Absolutely it is. But here's the good news. Back in 2015, it was $37 million. We have paid down $24 million in our county debt in the last eight years. 24 million. So we had gotten it down to about $6 million before we borrowed the $10 million for the high school renovation last year. Knowing that project's going to come up, so we had the foresight to look ahead and pay down some debt. We refinanced to 2016 when the interest rates were low. So to take advantage of that, to save our taxpayers some money. So we restructured our debt, because we're going to have huge spike in debt payment. We restructured all of that to flatten it out so it wouldn't have a tax impact on our citizens. And in two years, we're going to have most of our debt paid off. Right now, we have about $1.6 million in debt payments here. In two years, a million dollars of that's gone.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Fifth and final question, the town of Pamplin has worked hard in the last few years for revitalization. If elected, how would you advocate on the county level for this continued revitalization and economic redevelopment?
Yeah, sure, sir. I think what the town of Pamplin is doing down here is commendable, and they're working hard. All you got to do is just look outside and see on Main Street what's going on down here. We've got businesses that are coming back to town. We've got people that are renovating these buildings and utilizing space like this. So, you know, Pamplin is on the comeback. And I'm glad to have been a small part of that. I've worked with the last three mayors that have been here on issues related to Pamplin. And, you know, we, I always advocate for Pamplin, and Mr. Carter has heard me say this before, and maybe Mr. Hinkle, but we have to remember that mathematics county has two towns, not just one. We have two towns, the town of mathematics, the town of Pamplin. And we have to remember that mathematics county doesn't stop at Evergreen or Fairland. It doesn't stop in Scott's Creek. We've got a lot of folks that live beyond those areas. So, you know, continue to be a good advocate for the town. We have put money into the town. I've advocated, and we got $50,000 to help the town with this, the expansion and the trailhead development for Highway 8 Trail. And we're going to have a state park in mathematics county real soon because of the cooperation and the things that we've done with the town of Pamplin. We've worked with the town of Pamplin, unfortunately, a few years ago. The town had some, a difficult situation occurred, and the town was in a real serious financial trouble. Through no fault of their own, but we worked with the town to help get them through that. We, we had county staff that came down here for days and helped county, town staff find what, what is going on here? Where did the money go? Eventually, that has to be investigated by somebody else. But, you know, we've sent county staff down here to help the town. We have been to Washington DC to help advocate for the town when they had problems, when they couldn't pay their loan payments to those USDA loans. And so we've had meetings in DC. We talked to Dominion, because we knew who to talk to. But Dominion Powell was getting that a crack to light source. The town of Pamplin could not pay the light here. And Dominion said they were covered up. We went and talked to those people, and the lights didn't hit high. So that's the kind of things that we will, I will continue to do for the town of Pamplin if I'm chosen to be your representative on the board for the next four years. I want to go back in my last minute and a half, if I can, if I'm allowed, to use that time to go back and finish up another question. Is that okay? So we were talking about the debt. And another thing that I think is important, that, you know, our debt is manageable. We have paid down a lot, a ton of debt to prepare ourselves, to get ready for that $10 million expansion at the high school, which actually is like... for that $10 million expansion at the high school, which actually is more like 20 million, but we only borrowed 10. All of, just about all of us, all of our debt is school-related, okay? Here's the debt we're still paying on. The primary school addition, the middle school addition from 22 years ago, the elementary school sudden loan. So most of our debt is school-related. And I don't think anybody would tell us that we shouldn't be renovating these schools. We do have some landfill closing costs. We've got some state mandated costs that we had to finance for the animal shelter. The state told us we had to do certain things down there that cost us money. So another thing that, if you don't borrow the money, where are you going to get it from? You don't have an alternative but raise taxes. So that's not my position. That's not what I want to do. To raise $10 million, you know what your taxes got to go up? 66 cents a hundred. You know what you're paying now? 63. Your taxes have to double, double, if you don't want to borrow money on these large capital projects. So sometimes it makes sense to borrow. We're actually earning more money now than we're paying in interest. And I'll be happy to talk about more about that too.
And so for those who are interested and have the time and the ability to stay, there will be 30 minutes of time allotted to meet and greet the candidates, to interact with them, to ask them any questions they may have either about their presentation or about other matters. But the town of Pamplin thanks you for your interest. And we'll see you this evening.